Flags of regions.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on a nation of regard in the vision of liberty and justice for all.
Anyway, thank you for coming. So we'll open the floor up for public input.
Hello, I'm Seth Goldenstein and I'm here representing Delaware Valley Hospital. And I'm just checking to see our medical neighborhood site plan review on through the planning board review process, public hearing. And because it's a non-performing use, it's a conditional use permit, which is issued by the village board. And just checking to see the status of that stuff, if it's something that's done in the public forum or as a different line item during the agenda. Also, I wanted to check and see, I believe we missed one of the approval motions for the seeker process, the classification, I believe. There's usually two motions and I didn't think about it because Sean Letty wasn't here to direct us or remind us of all this stuff. So I just wanted to check and see if he wanted to catch up on motions for that as well.
Well, we need one to class by the Delaware Valley Hospital Medical Neighborhood Project as unlisted.
So we need a motion to qualify the hospital project as unlisted?
Correct.
I'll make a motion to do that.
A second.
Any discussion? All favor? Aye. Any opposed? Eric?
And then on your second motion, they need to approve the negative declaration of environmental significance. I thought we did it, but we could do it again to make them agree.
Make the declaration, negative declaration of environmental, right? Is that correct?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to do that. Second? Any discussion? All favor? Aye. Any opposed? Eric? We did do that. We've got that whole checklist with the intent of getting these things to be formalized to a order down. We'll do it. Okay.
And then the conditional use, the village board retains the oversight of issuing the conditional use because we're in a non-performing use of the presidential single zoning district code grid.
Do we have anything on that duty?
I don't.
It's approved at the planning board, who basically put this before round us, who we approved it. Okay, I'll make a motion and do that. In a second. Any discussion? All favor? Aye. Any opposed? Eric?
Hey, very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anybody else? Move on to department heads. Just start, yeah, I'm down there, we'll work our way down. Before we start with you though, I do have one ask from the department heads. Can we please get the monthly reports at least twenty-four hours prior to the meeting? Not thirteen minutes. Alright. Appreciate it.
Did everybody get my report? Anybody have any questions?
There's always questions, Shane.
Oh, hopefully not. I only have one request tonight, and that is to sign a three-year service agreement for the generator with Milk Cat that costs seventeen thousand, eight hundred thirty-three and fourteen cents, and that is a hundred percent E P C.
Make a motion to go ahead with the contract. Second? Any discussion? All favor? Aye. Any opposed? Eric?
That's all I have.
Should we get my report?
Yes, sir.
Any prayers, concerns, questions?
So just to go over for the upcoming work for June. You wanted to go over, you're doing brush pickups, street patching, leak detection, water meter issues. Dig safes, obviously, they're pretty consuming. Street sweeping, one of the, one of the aspects that's come up that people complain a lot is the dust of the street sweeping. I just want to make it a point that it's not something that you're doing nefariously. It's something that just, it's a, it's a byproduct of the amount of dust and the stuff in the street, and there's water there, and it's just something that happens. It's not...
It gets better the first couple times you sweep the streets. It's bad because the dirt is really thick, and then the sweeper just misses the water, so it just puts a light layer of moisture on the top. But you're cut into, you know, an inch thick of dirt, so you're gonna have dust no matter what you do. We can have that thing turn all the way up, and you're gonna have the seams, that's probably until we get the street swept a couple times, then it raises some of the issue with the money.
Just wanted to make sure we put that out there, because everybody has...
It's always a complaint.
But then we're asked why. Grinding tree stumps, I mean, we had a, we had a heck of a meeting this past month with D O T on Delaware Street going over some stuff as well. I don't know if you want to embellish on that.
So basically, they just go curb to curb, and we got a couple solutions for sidewalks down there. Technically, it shouldn't fall on the business owners of the building, so it's something we have to work with, like, you know.
Just like sidewalks, where the remaining portion of the village fall on the homeowners and stuff.
Correct. Yep, yep, yep.
Flushing hydrants and mowing, obviously mowing is a big one.
Yep. And we know a couple water leaks here and there.
You wanted to remind the residents or something?
Yes, I want to remind the residents. We discussed it last month also about the brush. Please be careful on the mowing and stay neat and clear. We have some pretty serious files up, again, they're all mowed up. And we're gonna try to do it as of right now, maybe once a week, at weather permitting. And then, again, we're gonna try to transition, transition to keep the mobile banks only to pick up. Of course, we're getting flat beds still, and we will not pick up flat banks. So I would like to do a public hearing sometime to change that code. I would like to ask for Matt, John, and myself to run a water conference, actually next week in the city, for water licenses, total a hundred and twenty dollars. More than that, we'll be very lucky.
Can I make a motion, Matt, we represent part of that quarter?
Eric? Any discussion? All favor? Aye. Any opposed? Eric?
Also, we have, every year, we budget for a while we have. Curry Wellman, the Ford is on the list for this year, and it is starting to give us some issues at this point in time. So I would like to get, we did budget for it this year, forty-one thousand, five hundred dollars, if there's no other problems. So I would like permission to get that scheduled, get them here, get that taken care of.
Make a motion if you'd like. Eric, go ahead. But it's good. In a second. Second.
Where is that well?
That one is the one that already damaged it.
Any discussion? All favor? Aye. Any opposed? Eric?
And I have one more lot I don't have on my report. We got the call from the dealership for the truck we ordered for this year. It's not gonna be here November, it's gonna be here in about a month. So, so I got some quotes for flatbeds, and the best quote we got was five thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars for that truck. I would like permission to get that ordered and get here.
That's all the budget this year?
Yes.
Any motion? Any motion? Second. We don't have to do this, we're good.
Oh, I thought you were saying their headlight.
No, I'm just saying, Dick got it, Dick got it, I said the same time. So I'll second, pick, pick, okay, that's, I'll second.
Any discussion? All favor? Aye.
Closing its whole head.
You got that, Sean?
Before we move on to the next one, I just want to point out, this morning, we had a couple of water main breaks. I know that you addressed one of them, to subdue, something like that, which I spent a little time with the guys up there as they were digging, and it's, it's quite a process to evacuate a hole, things falling in at the same time. You know, you're trying to get to that water main, meanwhile, it's squirting everywhere. It's like a geyser. And I mean, it's just, it's quite, it's quite an intense act, so to speak. And I just want to give you a shout out, and props to the P P W guys, thank you for going in this morning. And I know you have one more as well.
We are actually gonna start addressing that one tomorrow, I can't be yet, but there's a tree, the other one, on Delaware Street. So tomorrow morning, for a truck, he was too crazy, I was really attacking the tree, and do some saw cuts, and hopefully get that moved.
Which I'm sure is gonna be a source of contention for the village as well. But, I mean, it's unfortunately, I mean, if you want to have water, we can have water, or you can have the shade of the tree, so I guess you can pick one, but we're choosing the tree, the trees right away.
Where, where is that?
One sixty Delaware Street. It's by the hair shanty.
Thank you.
So, sorry about the permanence of my report. I normally get them out much earlier in the day, but I was having some complications with my software program today, it wasn't generating one of the pages that's normally in there. So we've got thirteen building permits issued for this month, four field inspections included. No fire safety inspections are completed this month, but you have to schedule those out a few weeks at a time, so there's gaps in between that. We've had thirty-seven notices of violation for grass sent out, and I'm still waiting to hear back how many lawns I actually got mowed from this last round, but as it is right now, we've only had three that had to be mowed from an outside contractor. Had one stop work order to do this month, and that was due to four workers here, and not being up to the current codes. And I'm working with the individual on educating them on how to move forward best in the process. And that's really all I have to do. Do you have any questions for me?
How is that relative to this time of year for lawns? Is that pretty good? I mean, we were here last year about this time.
Yeah. And normally, you start out in the beginning of the year with everybody getting away with it, and I was kind of really lenient the first time around, and I only sent these three out to the basic parcels that always need to be mowed, because we had such consistent range. But now that that's died off, I've been sending, like I said, I've sent out thirty-seven notices of violation this month.
People are responsive to them, too.
Yeah, so the contractor messaged me from the last time, it said, there's only about four or five from the list of seventeen or whatever that you've sent me, and I said, that's good to hear, because it has some days without range, so people are getting able to get through it. Thank you.
Chief?
You guys received my report? So, as time goes on, it's good, those numbers, like, folks are following, and I'm sorry to go out and see that now, so just wearing that. So no, the only ask I have is, there's a twenty-two five animal crimes conference on January, that's page one, or, like, I'd like to get initials for that, the training is free. What's the time? It's, uh, it's...
What is the time?
I have my...
I'm not sure if I can answer.
In a second. Second. Any discussion? All favor? Any opposed? Eric?
That's it, chief? Yes, sir. Just one ask tonight, on the sewer side of things, the liner was installed on the pipe coming from Black Palace, that took the building, that was done last week. We do have to invoice from the contractor for continuing that work, done by Earl Construction Company, every choice is for a hundred, twelve thousand, five hundred. That will stay within quoted value for that project, and that will be the initial, actually, it was done in April, and a new liner that was installed, especially, Black Palace is the partner in helping facilitate that work, and it's in place, and it has reduced the flow coming to the reservoir, and here on Planet, where the chain, chain, I don't know, some flow data, has a pretty good drop, which was anticipated, but it's...
Any motion for that?
Make a motion if you...
That's what I'm saying, you are adding a motion or pay the invoice that way?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Make the motion, we paid the bill for four hundred and twelve thousand five hundred dollars.
Second? Second one. Any discussion? All favor? Aye. Any opposed? Eric?
That's only a form of thing, we're asking, unfortunately. Water side of things, who are working with my service lines, and sorry, they noticed it has to go back to the health department this, this month, before I first, I'm looking for a job now. And our goal is to have a contractor lined up, right, by the end of summer, on start of fall, to do the site investigations, like we have to do for that project, which is funded by the state.
Is every, I'm looking at investigative, just the ones you said?
Just the unknown ones, somewhere. If we, if we know it's that, we would do it, if we know it's happening, we would do it, if we don't have records on it, then most of the ones we dig up to find out what they are, and then come up with a plan, and then sort them out, and get it fixed. So for the most part, we haven't identified, like services, and that'll be considered, but we do have a number of other unknown, you know, whether you collaborate with the conference, and regions, and so, three years ago, whatever, just those are the ones that we'll target to dig up, but there'd be notice just property, because we make questions for them, and we find it, and we can still do it. And the two projects, we have the site, the other process and signature is gone in there, and we'll do that with the health department, the ability to start construction, play some like ball time, and have a service, or, or, or...
Do you have a timeframe to that? I mean, is that gonna start right after Fairleigh? That's a hundred percent definitive, but I just want to make sure, because we're closing a pull down that everybody wants to go to, and I just don't want to see nothing happening more. So I just want to make sure that we got our guns in the room.
It's, we don't have a contractor, under contract at this point, we have to get the health department signed on it, as long as we have a contractor, then we lock in the schedule, run, and hope, when they come to you guys, you know, if we want to shut it down early, to kind of aid the contractor, we can, but if we don't, then we probably got to sign, you know, the rest of the ball, and then next spring, we can work, so it's up to you guys.
Why don't we revisit that, maybe in mid-July? Sometime just to see where we're at with making sure everything's in place, and then I guess we can get a view, and figure out what direction to move in, to make sure this moves follows, you know? Thank you.
People are maybe hired on, slipping lessons, I have seen a sense of schools, they have a Q R code up, they can sign up, right, going on that, and if they don't, I know how to do it like myself, so they come on July second, five to seven, and try and get up and get a question.
Can you talk louder, Brian, please?
What? Uh, what, we're gonna go back to that?
July second?
July second, then you have a sign up at the pool.
Thank you.
With people who don't know how to use the Q R code. And the classes will start July, but it takes about three weeks, Monday through Thursday. And there'll be only one session this year. Our team crafts will start on June third, and then on August seventh, Monday through Thursday. The park, the P P W's have done a lot of work up there, they've been recreated, the one part on, so that drains better, the payment, the stadium, they did work on the basins, they gave away to the, to the, and affairs, did that up, and do a lot of that and put stuff. And the stadium, Black Palace is purchasing a new liner for the stadium, so they may will put it out the fall, you know, thank you, Black Palace for doing that. And that's about it, unless you've got a question for me.
Looking for holidays, I couldn't see it, just a thing.
I'm high, you know, usually.
The old ones still in there, we kind of expect, see what they gotta do with it, right?
We're gonna work on it tomorrow, so we're gonna take it out and keep it for another liner, this case for patching, so I'm probably gonna cut it up, then roll it up, so that's easier to handle tomorrow. Two to four, if anyone's free, Monday?
Right? When?
Tomorrow. Two to four tomorrow.
Thank you.
Any other stuff? Do you need to, to mention anything?
Uh, please. Yes, we do. Yeah.
Sometimes looking for a motion to approve the hire of the summer workers. Make a motion to hire the summer workers that...
Two, two lifter's and one, one scratch? Do you want the names?
Logan Gardner, sixteen dollars an hour lifeguard.
Yep.
And Kristen Haywood, fifteen seventy-five, lifeguard.
Yep.
And then Leanne Browning, fifteen fifty as a, as a scratch, assistant, or a scratch. Make a motion, we go ahead. I'm sure you already made it. I'll second it then.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All favor? Any opposed? Eric? Everybody have a chance with the abstracts?
I'm here on behalf of the theater for general...
Oh, yes, jeez. Thank you.
Give me a list.
It's, I go down this line here, and I, I move on to like...
You need a bigger table, boss.
Alright.
Three, on behalf of the theater, just an event, porch house, of course, rapidly approaching, number seven. Coffee House is on the fifteenth at six P M. The movie is Lilo and Stitch, we're looking forward to the summer blockbusters. And then Jim also wanted me to share that the first of two performance lighting grants has been approved. So that's exciting, some upgrade, major upgrade of the stage lighting. There'll be upcoming fundraising for some of that as well. So he asked me to share tonight.
You said the fifteenth of the Lilo and Stitch?
This weekend.
This weekend? So the next two weekends, then?
Yeah.
I'd probably sleep watching it. Started driving, and I think it was the best nap I've had in years. Um, one more on the abstracts, everybody's had a chance with it, right?
Yes.
They got a motion to approve the abstracts.
Make a motion to approve the abstract, exactly.
Any discussion? All favor? Aye. Any opposed? Eric? At the same time, everybody had a chance with the, the dependence, right? Okay. Trustee reports. Start with you, Matt.
Um, yeah, as far as the... So, and then with the court, I'd like to add the two cameras, would be six hundred and seventy-five dollars, so I'd like to make a motion that we purchase two cameras that he needs to add to that, because it's gonna set up a time frame for this one. So, I'm motioning to approve seventy-five of the cameras.
Which ones are you gonna put outside?
The ones that are gonna be down in the office. Where, where, where we decide. I just have to let anyone know, I mean, but, so if we could decide that, like, you know, yeah, we're the going.
That total cost, or?
Six seventy-five to add two cameras to what we've already, what we've already have on order.
So what we, what we did last month was once you redoing everything?
Yeah.
This is, this is an add-on?
Adding two extra cameras on that order. That's what we just decided.
I thought we decided that we were gonna put them near the glass for entry points there, so look at the money, and then, that was on the outside of the office, wasn't it there? Looking towards the outside.
We have one right in front of the door there, right? We have one in front of the door.
Six, or... The door. So maybe, and then we'll get out the second one, we've done the counter. We got one more to put in.
We have two totals, so one over...
What's the, what's the radius of observation of those cameras?
I can't answer that.
Because that'll, we, we want to get from both angles, probably, just in that spot there, it's nearly to the right, so... Run over Johnny's desk, I'm just kidding. Just kidding, so...
So one over the counter, what we got with radius, and then...
From both angles, the radius.
Right.
A little, uh... You've got, on both of them, I mean, pump it down.
Well, it's based on the radius, I don't know what you're looking at, so you kind of... And they intended for the same room? Like, they're just, put it both in, in the wall, anyway? So I think that as long as we know that two are needed, then as long as we can...
We can figure it out.
I figured the ridge, uh, on the other point.
Yeah, that's right.
Overall, that's what we, the way they need to be secure, and get that dust, use everyone, just all got motion about it.
Right. So that way, for people ordering for the entrance, and that's pretty relevant.
So now you're just...
Yeah, 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 that's exactly what I understood.
Second one.
Okay.
Any discussion? All favor? Aye. Any opposed? Eric?
And that would be out, Matt.
Me? Um, just like, see what the board thinks about, I've been looking, this was something that was thought, thought up way back in, if I say back in two thousand and nineteen, Charlie Gregory started putting some camps left down by the river, on the green space. And I don't know if that's something, they had some information started, and that could be something that we could work through, maybe have few spots down there for next year's season. Is that something the board wants, we still keep looking into? Use that property down there, I mean, it's, uh... That's, yeah, that's one of my things, I want to talk to them, is what's going on with it, because I know he's talked before about, or I had with him, so definitely might have a conversation with Sean. I guess that would be a nice addition to some of his side items. Yeah, this was from, Charlie Gregory came back, when he was a trustee back in, excuse me, March of two thousand and eighteen, he sent this out to people, and that was, that was his original drawing of it. It's nothing that I think is big like that, but I mean, it's definitely over and around by the woods.
And if, if, within these orgies, if there's, if there's more than a certain amount, you're considered a camper.
Yeah, that's what I mean, anything more than, anything more than four. By, then you have to have the department house, so I've got all those rules and regulations to look at. But if everybody wants to go, I'll keep continuing forward with that. Should we have something for next year?
So we're gonna, we're gonna motion to continue to look into that, and aggressively get forward. Just keep working out.
Do you have a question?
Yes, sir.
Uh, just, um, could this be a concession, or who would operate this?
It would be a village joint, village corporation.
So then, you're telling one of the campers they would apply to the village?
Yes, just like you would state park, you would have to apply to the state, you would have to do it, you know, for, for that, or whatever, it would out there, so...
Like, like you rent our pavilions and such?
Yeah, that's simple. Are you, are you all looking to it?
Oh, yes. I'm a camper, I, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I've been handling a lot of rules and regulations throughout them.
Uh, thanks for the, my, my... That's fine. But, yes, they are a lot of slippery ways, but things for those ways, but we, it is dangerous up there, I know, Sarah and I went up and looked at it, and they stand at a belt, and I stepped on it, and that's not a good, a good place to sit, just to see if it goes, much safer, yeah, I do have, I, I got to get the bush, yeah.
Yeah, I, 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 yeah.
And, and, again, I would suggest, their group has been around for a long time, Tim Wright's been very, very busy, and it's, like, it's not, so, we'd like to see some young men help, and, 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 and,
The, just to touch on some things I thought about last time, follow up. Uh, the camp on Prospect Avenue, off Prospect Avenue in D O T right away. Um, we've had continuous attempts to locate anybody living there. Uh, the last several attempts, there was not appear to be anybody living there any longer, as such, during the meeting we had, uh, with D O T. I believe it was last week, um, they agreed to put up signage. Interesting, interesting signs have been put on both of the entry exit, the ingress and, uh, points to the camp area. Uh, I have been in touch with social services and other nonprofits to try to. Figure out how to clean that area out and perhaps make sure that the owners get their belongings, um, so the police. Um, about making sure that if property needs to be retrieved, she can be exempt from the trust ask, just to make sure that, um, I know else have ones down there, because we'll get that, but. Um, that should more or less resolve that issue, um, as anything is publicly distributed or presented about, it's just a lot of thing up to this point. Um, moving on to the next thing, uh, emergency planning meeting is still happening monthly, we held our fifth or sixth meeting now. Yesterday, we had a presentation on. Potentially investing a joint effort between the town and the village in an FM. Radio communication system. Uh, in the event of a major disaster to be utilized. Um, we had, actually, I'm not gonna, we did a very detailed presentation, he did a lot of work on us, so. Um, it's something we're considering, but it's complicated, so. Still early in that process, but, uh, future meetings will consist of, actually, we've got, we've had enough meetings now to really kind of hammer out what. We need to add, what we wanna add. Uh, and we have a, kind of a living document that we are, just a joint effort to put together that we anticipate completion sometime. In the next few months, hopefully. It all knows is complex, so if it takes longer, don't hold me to a couple of months, but we're trying very hard and doing it to get that done. I know you already mentioned it, but I wanted to mention again that, uh, porch pass is coming up this weekend, that's a big deal, should be a big event for the town, so that's something we wanna. Really focus on as well as the new tour, church tour happening on Sunday, so, um. Spread the word, bring friends and family into this Walton visit, I'm gonna do a good time gathering here. Um, and say thank you to everybody that showed up for the village cleanup effort. The big Cero, that was a massive turnout, uh, was very proud to be a part of. Um, we had, by my count, over a hundred thirty people that showed up, contributed to the, uh, the efforts. Saw young people, people and everything in between, and it was, uh, it's really great thing to be a part of, so. Thank you to all, just appreciate everyone who came up to that. Um. Going back to the meeting with D O T, we did talk, we did talk about. Two, the addition of two. Crosswalks, one at. A whole facility on nowhere. And that is. Something that could be accomplished in a pretty short amount of time. Uh, it will require some accessibility mats, and then once the accessibility mats are in place, which I believe we have. Um, we are already in possession of those, so if we put those down, we have contacts with D O T that should be able to get that straight relatively quickly. Um, so that'll make that area a little bit safer, um, but also for those that have been driving around the village, that's something new that'll add to, you know. Come down the hill, you gotta be a little more cautious. Because there very well might be pedestrians up there. Um, in addition to that, we talked about a crosswalk at. High school, middle school, in Garden Street. That one's a little bit more complex because while we have accessibility on one side of the street, we do not have it on the other, so. Uh, a rough estimate to complete that project is about ten thousand dollars to get the concrete where it needs to be. And, uh, accessibility for the facilities, um, which is requirement and then to do so. Um, looking under ways to create that source of income and, uh. And generally, we need to build that potentially. Um, but I'm not exactly sure what can I do with that yet, so if anybody has any great ideas, I'm very much open to them, try to get that, make sure I get to it more prospectively, to the school. And I mentioned Sea Click Fix last month, I have just not gotten time to dig into it yet, but it is definitely on my horizon now that my, uh, project upon Prospect is coming to a close, or there's. A less urgent necessity, we can focus on that, um. Perhaps next month, I'll have more on that, but. That's it for me. Okay.
Move on to the mayor. Three meetings, right, three meetings, Joey? So I've had a, a good chance to work with a lot of you individually, and some of you I still haven't had a chance much to work with you. You know, sewers, like that, I just wanted to. Say, I really appreciate everything you guys are doing and the effort you guys are pushing forward to, to make. Walton a better place. That also falls on trustees as well, and Jody was here Sunday morning, caught me off guard working. But I, I just wanted to say I really appreciate the efforts and everything you guys put forward, and I'm too proud.
Yeah, I can, uh, sometimes.
Um, it's a thankless job, and I wanna make sure I'm saying thank you. Um. Just to touch on what Eric just said about the, the Delaware Street cleanup, I mean, that was, that was tremendous, that was just, that was a, that was a huge show of pride in Walton. That, how bad, um, we wanted to get together and do things. And, uh, if we do that, I mean, the fun things are gonna be even more fun, so. I'm looking forward to, um, these events coming up, such as porch pass, the church tour. Freedom Fest, Freedom Fest on July fifth, we're gonna work that, so. I think that's gonna be a good show of, uh, community spirit, Walton spirit, so. The, um, let's see here. There's a duck race coming up. On Saturday, July nineteenth, I know that we could wait for the July board to do this for the July meeting, but might as well just get it done now so you can plan for it. This duck race will be from the Ogden Street Bridge, formerly the Robinson Brothers Auction Barn. Volunteers will be in the brook to retrieve any stray ducks along the way at the race conclusion. Um, this is for the four H club. We'll be selling adopted ducks. To raise money to help support for the Delaware County four H program. So it's a Saturday, July nineteenth, so I need a motion to, um, allow them to do this, right, Joey? Any close to street?
No. Motion that we allow them to do that for duck race.
Second. Any discussion?
Yeah.
All favor?
Hi.
You post? Harry. Duck races on. Alright, the, let's see here. I asked, Jody, I asked him to come in as well for the HUD. Housing and Urban Development. And. But. We are the HUD capital, I guess, of Delaware County. And in order for them to give benefits to everybody in the county, Walton has to sign on as the parental HUD. Capital of Delaware County. So. Need permission from the board, message for motion signed. We've always done.
It just appreciates it, but your signature?
No, it just continues their benefits, if we don't sign this, I'm sure that there's gonna be a lot of people that are not gonna be very happy.
Make a motion for all your sign. One second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Hi.
You post? Russell. The D V H picnic, that's, that's another picnic coming up next month, right?
Actually, uh, next week.
Next week? So, Butch, the free meal, as you know. It's, uh, but you have to do a speech for the meal. It's, uh, the eleventh of June, eleven thirty, it's a big community event as well, correct?
Yeah.
But it's not, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. Alright, but I just wanna make sure that I was aware of that as well, it's good to get out there and support all those people, plus, so you guys, what do you want? Quilters Guild is having a quilt show on Saturday, June seventh. To celebrate the twenty fourth anniversary, the quilt show will be at the First United Methodist Church, one on one North Street. I'm gonna put that out there, they're gonna have the show, so if you wanna go check out quilts. That's happening on that day. Alright, we'll move on to. Homecoming parade. So this Walton Central High, Walton Central School is planning their homecoming parade for Saturday, October eleventh. Twenty twenty five. Start time will be eight thirty in the morning, and route, or, excuse me, eight thirty.
Yeah, they gotta get it done all day.
I figured nine thirty.
I can't sleep good that day, you're gonna have to be up.
Alright, the route will be the same as previous years, bus garage on Main Street, right on the Bridge Street, left on the Stockton, right on the Maple, left on the school lot. Uh, so I need a motion to approve. One second. A second.
That's what I should have said, yes, I, I make a motion, Jody puts in an application to the parade, how's that, is that better, Jody?
Yeah.
I would forget, it's gotta be a favor now.
All favor?
Hi.
You don't need this right, Joey. R S S. Alright, the R S S, does that? There's no motion for that, Joey.
I was talking to him, yes, if you're, if you want to renew it at two percent, then you need a motion.
So I need a motion to renew R S S contract. To be adjusted annually at two percent, this would be a two year and monthly, but I would be in one thousand ninety nine and seventy cents. Putting a motion to approve this. Make a motion to. Allow R S S to continue to read, to renew their lease. Uh. At the rate of one thousand ninety nine seventy, one thousand ninety nine dollars and seventy cents, which is predetermined. Uh, and adjusted rate of two percent. This would be for two years. Or this would be the second year of that, so we're just allowing them to have it here, I suppose? Yeah. All favor?
Harry.
You post? Harry. Alright. In a local law, authorizing the operation of altering vehicles on village streets. This local law shall be known as. The Village of Walton ATV News Law. This local law enacted. Actually, I haven't really, that's just. Lead the target. The purpose law is to authorize and regulate the use of altering vehicles and other. Off, off highway vehicles on village streets to facilitate recreational access and trail connectivity while promoting public safety and orderly vehicle use. As used in this local law, the following terms shall have the meanings and set forth below. E T V, O R V, excuse me, O H V, and village streets, as defined. I can get this to you guys, we'll put it on the Facebook so you can. Read it, for me if you like. The. In accordance with the vehicle traffic law, the Board of Trustees in the village Walton hereby designates all village streets and public highways under its jurisdiction. As open for travel by altering vehicles, off highway vehicles with purpose of gaining access to areas where such vehicles and otherwise law, are lawfully operated. Vehicle finds that this designation is necessary to gain access to and from permissible off-road areas to facilitate continuous travel along village routes that are not otherwise connected. The conditions. Compliance with all laws. All operators must comply with provisions of Article forty eight D and forty eight C of Vehicle Traffic Law and all applicable state and local laws. Hours of operation is permitted from seven A M to nine P M daily. Speed limit. E T Vs and O H Vs should not exceed the posted speed limit of twenty five miles an hour, whichever is lower for. Safety equipment in all vehicles must have functioning headlights, taillights, brake lights, brakes, and factory installed mufflers or equivalent noise dampening devices. Insurance, proof of insurance must be carried at all times and shown to law enforcement upon request in accordance with the vehicle traffic law. Operator requirements, operators must be at least sixteen years of age, or in compliance with V T L. The Vehicle Traffic Law. Including a flip with applicable safety certification for young riders. Sorry, I was gonna drop now. Passengers must only be carried on E T Vs or O H Vs equipped by the manufacturer for more than one rider. Sinage, the village, so, shall appropriate signage at or near entry points to the village and other locations that are necessary to notify the public about. E T V, O H V, travel permissions and conditions. Sinage shall comply with regulations established by New York State Commissioner of Motor Vehicles. Alright, there's a series of offenses, if you violate the laws, starting from two hundred dollars to seven hundred fifty dollars. And any, if any provision of this local law is held invalid by a court in conflict with jurisdiction, the remainder should automatically fall force to effect. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Uh, just a question, how does, uh, like, two oh six and state highways impact? Or doesn't that matter because it's all within the village?
Those fall under state, and you're not allowed to travel on those.
So like, somebody coming from Bear Spring.
They can't come down.
Come down and hit a cross, if they have a site.
You'd have to take town roads, right? You can take town roads then, right? Back, back and go.
Only if it's single.
But is it, you're able to cross them as long as you do it safely, right? You just can't travel on them, correct?
You can go straight across a state highway. And get to the next trail.
That's based on, uh, the way the law is.
Can you tell me where the trails are located that would provide the connectivity?
Uh, Sheffield Pond is providing trails.
Is that on private property, or?
It's gonna deal with public use.
I'm sorry, is there more than one trail?
Well, I mean, the idea behind this is, uh, if we take a step forward in allowing this, then maybe there will be more trails, most likely, because. I mean, something has to get to allow to happen. The other access, this is not just for trails, too, it's also to allow, um. Like, say in the village, like, you have a sixteen year old child, and they're way out there vehicles. Um, afterward, this kid can now actually use that to go to work, um, if he wanted to, in a snowstorm, he could go, um. Shake your head.
That's what it says.
What's that?
That's what you just read.
What's that?
It's something you'll be allowed to do it to get to.
Right.
Access to a trail. It doesn't say anything about.
I stand, I stand corrected, I stand corrected, thank you. So, I stand with what you said.
So I do have one more question. Um, there was discussion at other municipal boards about, uh, certain E T Vs or U T Vs not being able to be. Registered or licensed or something, does that apply here? Are you waiving that, what's excluded?
Uh, the Baja right here, let's see here. He goes by the way.
What, can you comment on that, chief?
I have to do some research on it.
Like, the U T Vs cannot be registered in New York State, because of the weight of the U T V.
Or.
A four wheeler, yes. If you buy a U T V, you cannot, it cannot be registered.
Over thousand pounds?
In New York State, yes, over, I think it was, yeah.
Thousand pounds or?
Thousand or twelve hundred or something like that, like, most A T, or U T Vs are anywhere from fifteen and up. And you can't register them. I have full insurance on mine, full coverage. I have full insurance online, full coverage, but you can't insure, or can't register in New York State.
So those cannot be operated on village streets?
So according to this regulation that our lawyer wrote up, it says insurance is required. Proof of insurance is carried at all times and shown by law enforcement. So I'd imagine.
Oh, I thought you said in accordance with V T L.
Yes, two four oh seven.
Okay.
Which does say, um, if they don't have registration, they need to have insurance.
I was curious to know, uh, if, for example, there is no, say, license plate on the ATV, UTV, whatever. Uh, if they cause an accident and are still mobile, there's no way to identify that vehicle if they need to do an accident?
Be the same way, what if it was a vehicle that had no license plate?
Or an ATV, I mean, is, is there going to be a requirement for having some kind of plate to identify?
We cannot issue a license plate. We cannot issue any registration according to the DMV law, that's something the DMV covers all across the board. So their registrations, their identification mark, their license plates and stuff like that, that's something, they don't have to come from the UTV.
So, for example, a person on an ATV, it's pedestrian, when they let, I mean, what does the pedestrian do? In terms of getting any kind of decoys, because there's no identifying proof of that vehicle?
The same thing if the car had them.
If the car has a license plate and is traceable.
Right, but we're speaking in hypotheticals, all right?
I know, but it's a big concern.
Right.
You know, um, it, it, I, yeah, it's just a concern about, um.
Well, this, this is not gonna be passed tonight, this is not, I'm not asking the board to pass this tonight, we need that with a public hearing. And it also needs to be sent to Delaware County as well for review. So what I'm asking for tonight is a date to set for a public hearing, and also another motion for Delaware County for a review of that. Is that right, Jody? So I need the first motion.
I want to make a motion that we hold a public hearing either June twenty-third or twenty-fourth, and also for, to inform Delaware County, you have to answer them.
What's gonna be two separate motions?
Okay, okay, the first one's a public hearing, June twenty-third or twenty-fourth?
Twenty-third is Monday, twenty-fourth is Tuesday. Closing ceremony is approved on this fall, twenty-fourth, we're gonna have a copse. Twenty-third?
Twenty-third.
Just the same thing, I mean, you're really about driving, chief, just driving on sidewalks, even, even somebody pushing a baby carriage. Oh. You know, there's, you know, the same way with driving, you have to go out two streets.
Right, yeah.
Can I also, can I also ask, um, the surrounding towns, there's several surrounding towns that are doing this already, correct?
There are two.
Two?
Two, and all of the, where it's not, where it's not.
Okay.
They have, look at.
What are the towns that are doing it currently, do you know?
Roxbury, Old Chester, and Stanford. One second. One favor? All opposed? Very. I need a motion to send this to Delaware County for review. Make a motion to send that closer to twenty-three, second. Any discussion? One favor?
All right.
Can you both? Very. Public hearing, we can have, talk about all those things. It was just, tonight was just more or less to get this, um, to public hearing. As is this next one as well, another public hearing.
Now, would you agree to do that, because you've had some days?
This is.
Because what he was trying to do was put, like, a whole new section of code in? And that, I don't believe was the intent to begin with, and it's just to define what that is and to put it into a, um.
Take a look at that. Did you get, is that, you got that as well, right?
Yeah, from Sean, but we were waiting for Merzick to send, um, the definition of what the reg, what it was supposed to be, so that he could update the code. Bring you back to the bill. Well, that's what, if you want.
Right.
Right, but we didn't, our intent was not to rezone it. It was just to do, like, an allowable use, am I correct? Or is it resort?
Correct, it was to make an allowable use for the MR district. And so there's more than one MR district in the village, and it would be able to be spread to those other districts as well, if it was something the community wanted or the whole. Can you elaborate on the MR district? Multiple flat here as a residential district?
What, what are we talking about?
That's a good question. Um, do I know that? You know, um, I don't know if I know as much as you do, so I'll actually look for it. So Sheffield's, Sheffield Pond, uh, people bought that and they want to create, um, want to create multiple cabin stays, and they want to put restaurants, and maybe a grocery store. There's a couple other different ideas, but there's nothing definitive at this time, but the area's not zoned, I believe it's zoned residential, is that correct?
Yeah.
Right, which, if you look at the definition of all these aspects they want to put in there, it falls under a resort-like definition. So it has to be rezoned to allocate, but there's no area in the entire village that's been zoned as a resort, um, to meet those parameters.
Certification there, what Jody's saying is that we're not trying to rezone the area, we're, well, the initial discussion was, is the area gonna be completely rezoned, or is that zoning area gonna be allowed to have one more conditional use put into it? So you're not creating a whole mother zoning district, it's allowing this one zoning district to have that one more conditional use, which will also be able to spread to the other MR resident districts in the area. So it's, it's not creating a whole new district, is what Jody's asking, is, is are we amending one district?
So one is much more detailed than the other, creating a whole new district.
Creating a whole new district, then you're, I have to re, renumber and rewrite all the codes for it to fit in accordingly. Whereas if you just add in, uh, one more conditional use, you'll have a couple pages to take out, a couple pages to put in. It's not changing the entire code, it's changing one district, not in Boston.
So your professional opinion is that the, the more fish must take?
I believe it's the most simpler and effective route to take, and also, like I said, at a later point, the community loves the resort up there, the other MR districts in the area could be able to have that same conditional use.
Okay, now is that something we can do now, or is that something that requires further?
It's still gonna, um, require amendment
Pages and documents.
The law, so we're gonna need a public hearing, I'm saying, but, um, but he originally said it was like a whole new district.
Correct, yeah, well, Sean, you're right, you're, you said, nothing we have, yes. What Sean, that is conditionally recommended was an amendment to the MR district. What was proposed later on in the email chain was a whole new zone, not just amending one conditional use for a district. So that's the, the difference of what we're talking about right now. Are we changing one, are we making a whole new zone, or are we just gonna amend one zone?
Okay, but either way, we gotta do a public hearing on either way.
Either way, yes.
So can we set a public hearing date with the anticipation of either of those being completed in a relatively short period of time, or is that?
As long as the board has the documentation fourteen days prior to the date.
So how long do you need to set out a date to have a public hearing at such a point?
If, you know, if you guys, if the board has received the new stuff tomorrow, then it'd be fifteen days from today. You know, and sort of, don't you put it on the same day, three days, three days?
For.
Can we do that? Can it be done?
Yes.
Good, I make a motion to set the public hearing on motion for the zone slash resort situation. On the same day, uh, we, we. One favor?
Just to be clear, there's not a proposed resolution right now, that would come once you hear from the attorney.
So we're not gonna change the requirement?
No, we're just adding, uh.
Is the just the name for? It's, it's allowing, it's allowing that one district to have one more conditional use. So there's permitted uses where everybody can do all these uses, but there's conditional uses where they have to get approval from the board.
Each one.
But you don't, no additional requirement. They would still need to come to the board and request to be able to do this in that, uh, zone, zone area.
So we, we can have much of the condition, if we fix this up, that's, uh, one is on the calendar.
Yeah.
That's what the definition of that use is gonna define what a, what a resort is, what things can be built in. If there's separation, this can say that, that definition, you know, where it's incorporated, and that, that, that is, it's a priority.
So just to clarify, so we, we are going to be doing that public hearing the same night, on June twenty-third, yes?
I have a, I, one favor, I'll have one. I, can you both? Um, I just, just to not backtrack real quick, but you, we got the, uh, the approval to start digging over there, uh, from Stanford, yeah, we got the approval. No permit required, nothing, right, just going to do a public hearing. All right, the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five budget modifications. Yeah, that's the last. All right, jumping ahead, Village lawn sale, weekend of July fourth to include Thursday, July third, or Sunday, July sixth. People like to host your lawn sale with community members, visitors, and farmwide would like to spend the day shopping for sales. In the past years, the Walton Chamber has sponsored the event for seven, last seven years of the event organized by Terrapide. Patty Wood and myself, although the Chamber no longer sponsors the event, they do fully support it. Patty always helps promote the event through the Walton Chamber Facebook page. This event is not sponsored by a specific organization, but we would like, we would, we know it would be an event that should be continued, that should continue. Man, I can't talk today. We've taken it upon ourselves to keep the event going, we would like to request the village board's continued support to help promote the event. So basically, she's looking for a motion for the waiver of lawn sale permits village-wide from the weekend, uh, July third to July sixth, which is something we've done every year, so long we're sponsored by the Chamber, but it's still something that, um, just the community believes should continue, and I think that is a local tradition, so.
Yeah.
I'm gonna make a vote, I'm gonna go for it.
Go ahead.
I'll second, okay.
Make a motion to, uh, with lawn sale permits, do a, lawn sales village-wide, open holiday. Second, second. Any discussion? One favor?
Aye.
Can you both? Eric. Turn my heat up in here, I think it's another two hours long. All right, uh, budget amendments, we did, I wonder, you wanna do the, uh, fill that out for us. All right, I need a motion to approve the budget modifications that Jody has done. We just need a motion to approve the budget modifications that was prepared by Jody.
Yep.
Make that motion. Second it? One favor?
Aye.
All right. Can you both? Very. I would, uh, like, just for executive session to present personnel. A second motion to the executive session to present personnel.
Where is the MR district? Don't be afraid, I'll, I'll meet you down there.
The door!
Bundy, behave yourself.
Yeah.